Before we start tonight, we're going to have the pledge, we're going to have the invocation. And invocation is going to be led by Dennis. Reverend Reynolds couldn't get back this evening. And let's see, who's doing the pledge?
Me.
Good. Okay, let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful evening. Lord, we ask now for your direction, your guidance. Lord, I pray that you touch each member of the council, Lord, that you will just guide them and you will direct them through as they conduct the business of the city, Lord, that you will bless them. And it's all in Jesus' name that we ask. Amen.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Call the meeting of the City Council together. The first order of business will be, can you turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate? Whatever makes sense. Secondly, then we will have a reading of the minutes of the April 6th meeting. Start reading, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I've made a motion. Half those is presented.
What we have to do is start the second meeting.
Got a motion and a second that we approve the minutes as they were sent out to the council members. All right, any additions or corrections? Nonappearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Isn't that funny when you threaten to read those? Okay, under new business tonight, we have a request for match money for a bulletproof vest, Chief David Counselor. We went over this today at Board of Works. We need to advertise for a public hearing on a waiver vote of about $4,000. We do this every year. And we need eight vests. We don't know how much money we're going to get. It's a 50-50 match. And they're $850 apiece. Anything you want to add to that?
No, it just, the grant came open again, like it does every year. And our vests, these last eight are wearing, are dated, we got them in 2009, early 2009. So they are past a limit of five years. And these four, there's four line guys on the street and then four, three detectives and of course Dennis. And they're the ones that need the vest. And so there's eight. And we'll go in and ask for that. And what they send us, what they approve us for is what they approve us for. So that, I'm asking to make the match. And I think we come up with a figure.
Four thousand, but we actually don't need to appropriate that right now until we find out what the grant's actually going to be.
Are you still okay that you will appropriate it?
What do you need from us, Your Honor?
Just an okay.
Since this is a tool that we really need, I would like to make a motion that we go on. Go ahead, just please.
Second.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Got a second. Got a motion and a second that we, if we get the grant, we will put this money aside and we will take it from waiver vote and pay the 50-50 match. Any discussion?
My question, in the event that we, for some reason, we didn't get the match, does that stop this?
We'll have to come back and pay for them because we're running on illegal vests. And if we would have an incident, we'd be in big trouble.
Well, that's my point. Why wouldn't we just?
Because you can't get a grant.
We can't do it that way?
Can't get a grant if you already paid for them.
Okay, thank you.
So what we've done, let me explain something, that, starting about, it was like 2003, I think it was, or 2003. 2013, '12, '13, with new officers and stuff, we've been, we've been taking this grant money and buying it a little at a time, replacing these, replacing these. Because back in '09, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we ended up buying, like at the time, 33 vests for everybody on the police department. That's a big chunk of money. So we started rotating them out, especially we got a few new officers and stuff like this, who got them, you know, and everything else, which, in that way, they're, they're on a rotation basis, instead of hitting, hitting all at once, X amount of dollars, it's a lot cheaper that way.
And Tom, we always have, always in the past, gotten funded for at least 1,800 to 2,400 towards vests.
Well, that's, that's what I, I thought that would happen. Now that the mayor had said, I remember we got that tub grinder. We purposely waited, we got the grant and make about 90 percent grant.
It'd be nice if they let us just go ahead and buy them and then we get the grant, but they won't let us do that.
Yeah.
I wish we could, because they are outdated right now.
Thank you, Council, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We got a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Anybody? Nonappearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. That takes care of that, thank you. Also, under new business, we're going to skip item B. I've appointed a committee to take care of that. Fran's going to chair the committee, and I'd like a volunteer from the council to work on that item. Is there anybody who wants to volunteer?
I do.
You want to volunteer? Okay. Ms. Montgomery will volunteer to be on your committee.
Aye.
Mr. Baker and Fran will chair it. And I'll sit in on it, and we'll see if we can come up with a solution to this problem and try to get it maybe at the next council meeting. Okay, we have resolutions 2015-15, 2015-16, reimbursements, money coming back, 117, 21 telephone, and the police department, 68330, and other contractual. I'd like to take both of those together if it's okay.
Some motion.
Second.
Is it airport vehicle damage? Is that what we have this money coming back?
Yeah, there was an accident. It's not the, it's a truck, an airport truck.
Okay. It's not the van that they use?
No, no.
I move that we pass resolutions number 2015-15 and 16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Maybe I'm not hearing well tonight. Did you hear?
Actually, I already had a motion and a second.
We got two now. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Penning ordinance 3183. This is $51,489 of additional appropriation. This will have to be a public hearing. Have you advertised it?
Yes.
Okay. No, I better check. I just thought. Sure. This will be a public hearing to take this out of the SCAP fund, that we can pay our part on the Grand Avenue project. And this isn't all of it, but this is part of it.
Well, it's two different things, actually. It's $16,744 is for our part of the inspection fees of the project that's going on, the 20th to 24th Street of Grand Avenue. Then $34,745 is the city's part of the preliminary engineering and right-of-way for the new part, the 24th to 30th Street project.
So that's total 51,400.
Yes.
Yeah. Everybody understand what it is?
Yep.
All you're here in permission for then tonight. Well, this ordinance is to allow us to pay that, which we're mandated to pay part of that from the city. The reason you'd have to do that, because the grant pays for the separation, but when you get new sidewalks and a new street, the city is obligated for part of it, and it's about 20 percent. In fact, it's almost 30 percent, isn't it?
Well, yeah, but that's divided between the city and the utilities. So the utilities pays part and the city pays part.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending ordinance 3183.
Second.
We have a motion to consider pending ordinance 3183 on first reading, taking 20 or $51,489 to pay our part of the Grand Avenue project, and to be paid in the way that Julie explained to you. Any discussion? Any discussion at all? Nonappearing, we'll have a real call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Pass that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules so you can consider it on third and final reading?
I move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules so we can consider pending ordinance 3183 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward if you like.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3183 on third and final reading. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Real call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
You have passed that on third and final reading. Appreciate that. We have pending ordinance 3154. This is a, our part, or no, this is a, to fund the part of the terminal and the apron rehab at the airport, $45,117.77.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This says 3184, and this is 3154.
It is 3154.
No, it's not. It should be 3184.
Okay. Why do I have 31?
I don't know.
It should be 84.
I believe so. I don't know why she's got these office numbers while.
We supposed to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
This is coming out of the airport fund.
Well, let me explain. It's kind of an unusual situation. This money came to the airport. We let out bids for the apron term, the rehab project, and we had a company that bid on it, accepted. We accepted his bid. And then, when it was all said and done, he said he could not honor his bid. So the board accepted a certified check in place of his bid bond, because the next bid was quite a bit higher than the one, than his bid. So now this amount needs to be appropriated so we can use it towards the cost of that, because the grant won't pay for that, that part of it.
And this is coming out of the airport fund?
That money was put into the airport improvement fund when we received it. And that's exactly the amount of money that we received from the contractor.
Everybody okay? I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Anybody at all? Anybody like to?
It's very unusual circumstances.
Anybody? Three times, anybody like to speak on this issue? Nonappearing, I oppose the public hearing. And we can consider a motion on 3184 to take $45,117.77 on the airport funds so we can finish the terminal and apron rehab project.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor. Council, any discussion?
Julie, you're secretary of that board. What, where do we stand in their improvement plans? Are there more improvements to come along?
Uh, yeah, that's, they're constantly improving it, you know. They're actually, right now, they're in the middle of, they're rehabbing the terminal itself. And that project is due to be completed in the next couple of months, I believe.
July, I think it's. Good.
Oh, I think it's before then. And then, then this apron goes along with that terminal. So that, and then I think they've got another project coming on after this one. Most of that's federal aviation grant money, yes. I think the airport has like a 5 percent match on all those projects.
Julie, that was going to be my question. You said this, this apron is actually, is like an extension on the new rehab of the terminal, right?
Yes.
Because you don't get a lot for $45,000 when it comes in here.
Well, that's only, that's a small part of it.
Well, no, that's what I was, that's the reason I was saying.
I think that total project's six or 700,000 dollars.
Yeah, it's a fortune.
Yeah.
Gene worked really hard on that, on the board, yeah.
Federal government is pouring money into county airports all over the United States. I've talked with federal aviation and in Chicago, and they are just pouring money. It's a homeland security issue. If a, with any airports, they're, they're going to have them spotted every place. A security issue.
Well, we were so fortunate, and I could say, Gene, this board works so hard. We have what's called ILS, Instrument Landing Service, and I'm not sure if Richmond has theirs yet. But we were so fortunate when corporations need flying parts and so forth. So we are keeping up on our airport.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Yes.
And a second.
Yes.
Pending ordinance 3184 on first reading. We'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second that we suspend the rules so we can consider pending ordinance 3184 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nonopposed, we can proceed to the third and final reading if you like.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3184 on third and final reading, taking $45,177.77 from the airport fund to do the terminal apron rehab project. Further discussion? Anybody? None appearing, we'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
You have passed that on third and final reading. Thank you, we got that all worked out. Department reports. Dean Morley's not here tonight. EDD director's in Chicago. Utility department superintendent Mike Bottomy.
Should have my report attached. Attached to the report is our monthly revenue expenditures, our balance, all sort of overtime reports. This month is $4,950. Half of that was after hour calls, service department. Work orders, 54 water, 26 sewer. Project updates, nothing too new with the Grand Avenue project. Weather's been an issue here lately, but they're still on schedule. They were supposed to start the 21st F project today. The rain kind of stopped that, so hopefully sometime this week, they will get that started. Cross-training at the office begun. Surprised us, we have our, the person that takes our payroll and voices is retiring at the end of this month. We wasn't expecting that. And our bookkeeper's retiring at the end of July. So Penny and Lisa, Julie and the clerks, something they've been helping us out, kind of cross-training them two, until we get organized and take a look at our future plans with the utilities office. But other than that, is there any questions?
Questions on utilities? Anybody? Things are moving along just fine.
On Grand Avenue, the current project in progress. I think we were told a couple of weeks ago, that the street will soon be open, my, to traffic or something?
No, not, no.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood.
We're hoping that that street is open by the time they have the fair parade the last Sunday in July. That's our goal.
And I know the sidewalks and they won't be in then, but I think, I thought they, oh, okay.
We hope we have blacktop now.
I was under the impression that it would be open to traffic this summer.
We hope. We've only lost two weeks.
Yes. Okay, good.
Quit raining, we're ready to go.
Transfer station, Tom?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have your report in front of you. You folks have any questions?
I'd like to go ahead and talk about what we're going to do.
Please.
Go ahead and tell them.
I'd ask the mayor if we could have a, what we used to refer to as a free Friday. That's where anyone lives inside the city, in Connersville, could bring one pickup truck load of general household waste to the transfer station, no charge. There would be no tires, no construction waste, just general household trash. And he had suggested, we did this last year, he said, let's, let's carry it over to Saturday morning. So I'd ask him, and we'd put some dates, and what we're going to have would be the April, or May the 15th, on a Friday, we would have a free Friday for the citizens here in Connersville. All you need is proof of residence. And we'll extend that also into Saturday morning. And we're going to have a, he was gracious enough to allow us to do that. And also, while I'm discussing that, the second Saturday in May, we will have our community shred day, where you can bring sensitive documents. And we're trying to have this once in the spring and once in the fall. We've done it the last three or four years now. And I try to keep it at the second Saturday in May and second Saturday in October. So far, it's been working out real good. Thank you.
And we're going to declare the week prior to the 15th of May, as cleanup picks up week in Connersville, we're encouraging our citizens to clean their basements, clean their garages, get ready. And on that Friday and Saturday, we're going to bombard the transfer station, get rid of all of our trash, make our town look real nice for the summertime when the train is here, Thomas the Tank and all the guests come in. So we're going to spread the word on that. If you ride up and down the alleys today, I got out the other day, we need to move a lot of trash down at the transfer station and get rid of this stuff. It accumulates over the winter. So that, you'll hear more about that and a free load. And remember, no refrigerators, no electric stoves, no tires, and no construction waste.
No construction waste. Okay, thank you.
Party department. Troy?
We had 110 runs through the month of March, 323 hours of emergencies, 13 hours on inspections, 13 investigations, six pre-plans, 87 hours of training, $31,000 in damages. We had three overtime fires, call-ins, and $4,093 in overtime. $2,115 of that was in the FLSA, so that meant 1,977 was an overtime call.
Questions from the prior chief?
Do you have anybody on sick leave, Troy?
I have one on sick leave a little bit of the month, and everybody's back.
Good.
I had one got an injury. He was off for three days, so we had a couple off during the month.
$175,682.20 that cost shop rates in the department in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy, will you pop down, if you would? So people can see you on camera. I just want to make a comment. You folks had a house fire in, I think it was Vermont, around the 2,000, 2,100 block. My understanding from those neighbors was extremely quick response.
He's got a picture of it, don't you, John, for me? That's what we pulled up on.
Yeah, and it was very, put up real quick, and anyway, the folks in that area told me to say thank you.
There's, second picture is what we, we ended up with, one room damaged is all.
Yeah, you have to say both, both houses on both sides in real good shape. Anyway, well done.
Those houses are closed.
Thank you.
EMS.
Okay, for the month of March, city share, our expenses was $38,245.29. Our receipts was $16,136.6. Polo was $22,114.63. And we made 227 runs. Any questions?
Dale? I know you get turned me asking you this, but how's the new truck doing?
Very well.
Good, because that one we had before. But anyway, good.
We've had some very, very serious runs this, this last couple of weeks. Very. I'm sometimes amazed at the response time. I hear two minutes, they're there.
Wait, while you're on that, one we'll talk about later, but last week, I had, we had to call the unit for my daughter, and I guess she had a seizure. And they were, the firefighters were there immediately, like within a minute. And, you know, it was there real quick, so I appreciate, look, you guys, and your folks over there.
And, you know, if it's not 911 gets it out and they get there, that's the only way we can get help to them.
Yeah.
And it's very critical.
They were extremely quick. I was surprised how quick, I mean, less than a minute, I think.
Park Superintendent Jessica.
[laughing]. Revenue for the month was $21,162.50. We have soccer sign-ups, T-ball, so, and that, so. Expenditures were $47,130.90. Some activities and programming going on right now. We're currently having our summer discovery registration. It's, you can sign up at the Miller Center. It's $10 per child. Summer discovery starts on June 1st, which is the first Monday after school. The restrooms and shelters are now open. We also refurbished the Robert's opening doors, finally.
Oh, finally.
Yeah, finally.
We have our church league softball sign-ups going on now as well. The deadline is May 4th, and it's $180 per team. Spring soccer started this past Saturday. We have 327 kids, which is the most ever. We also just finished taking our T-ball and softball sign-ups. We had 195 kids sign up for T-ball and 225 girls sign up for softball. So for the first year, taking all of that over, we did pretty well. We're also in the beginning stages of planning basketball league for this fall/winter in light of the boys and girls going to closing. So far, we've met with the boys head basketball scholarship, high school, and we're planning on meeting with Coach Thompson, too, in the next week or so, so.
We're working with the school corporation to, Dr. Hodges is trying to find us a gym with bleachers so that we can go ahead and do the basketball program. And I told Jessica to go ahead, to plan, to just go ahead with it. It looks like that's what we're going to have to do. So we're going to move forward, both with girls first and then with boys.
Yeah, girls will be first, and then boys probably in January. Maybe late December, but January, February, we'll be boys, so.
So we got a lot going in the parks to go around.
What were the ages on the summer discovery program?
It's going into first grade and coming out of sixth grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We also, we have, what'd you say?
No, go ahead.
And you go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, no, really. [laughing].
We have the sign, we're expecting any time.
They brought some equipment today, so.
We'll have that. We'd like to get that up there so we can get it working. That's all being donated by the Huffmire State. That's going to be a real nice addition to the park. They're actually picking on me for taking so long to do them darn doors. They expect you to do them doors with no money, you know? So you gotta go around and you gotta gather up some money before you can do things like that. But I gotta brag, Billy did the doors.
He did a great job.
We tried and tried and tried to buy doors, we tried to hire someone to do the doors, and we just couldn't get anybody. So I said to Billy one day, let's take those things off, make a makeshift door on there. off. They got the makeshift door on there. And he took white oak and put around the edges and gotten hardware. They refinished the doors and they really looked nice. Did you go look at them?
Yes, I did. And they do look nice. They look much better.
Yeah.
And they work a lot better, too.
And we
Securely lock the buildings.
And we done way with padlock.
That does make it
They gotta work. Sometimes when you don't have money, it takes a while. You wanna talk about the elders' election?
That is May fourteenth at eleven-thirty, I believe, at the Miller Building, in the gym. It's for anyone who passed or present and over the age of eighty, eighty or above, free lunch.
Last year, we did over two hundred, two fifty, I believe. It's a free lunch. We're gonna have entertainment. This is something we put on for the older people in town. And they also, your caregiver can come if you have a caregiver. And Mary Ann Morris is in charge of it. And I don't have her number. I should have it. You can look it up in the book. Or you can call my office and we can tell you how to sign up to go to that dinner. This is a wonderful program. It's the third year. We started with the bicentennial. And it's really a great thing. None of you up here are old enough to go, but it's okay.
Is that just on buildings?
Yep. Property and liability and a little bit on workman's comp insurance.
Oh.
Any questions for the park department?
My question was on porta potties. That's why I wanted him to go first. I've always saw this and I really never asked. You have so many bathrooms. Where do you, what do you use the porta potties?
We have one down at Smalley's for John Carr, Nature Trail. This one we're actually getting rid of because we put a restroom in the Red Cross building, which is that, that's what that one was for.
Okay.
That's the new sewer work that's listed on there.
They're coming to pick that one up, I think, in the time. So, but I plan to bring that back in the winter because all the restrooms are closed in the park. That way people have at least somewhere.
True, true.
So.
Your list is quite short.
I know.
That's good.
To get time, stop at the Red Cross building. That restroom is really neat. It really, it's very professional.
He built it that, too. So, along with the help of the guys. So. All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Department.
We've had one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six law reports, thirty citations, zero orders and ordinances violations. Forty-seven warnings issued for personal injury accidents, fifty-seven property damage, zero fatalities, and sixty-eight arrests.
Cost of operating your department, Dave, one seventy-nine, one hundred and seventy-thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and seven ninety cents. Do you have anybody on sick leave?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm on sick leave.
Good.
We did tell just recently about it, didn't we? Dean?
Well, Dean was on there for a while. But we had him on a temporary life duty status, helping with sorting out paperwork and tickets and stuff like that.
Did you recognize the overtime was only one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars?
I noticed that. I didn't mention it, but I'm glad you did.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The number for Mary Ann Morris is two six five, seven zero one three. John, can you put that on the screen? She is in charge, sign up to go. That's a wonderful program. If you have somebody in your family that you want to attend, you can be the caregiver. You don't have to be a nurse. Just go and do that. I've attended the last two, and I get to attend this one. And it's really a nice, really a nice thing. Street Superintendent, David?
Good evening, all. It's a wonderful time of year. We've got the Salt Barn Fall and Page Fork. And so that part of the year is over with. And spring is always a much nicer time. But anyway, we've been, we started in the last week or so of mowing. And between rainstorms, we're trying to patch holes. And I asked my folks the other day if they could come up with a way of putting a plug in a hole where we can drain them so we could patch them. Everybody laughed at me. But anyway, it's, it's what the weather is and what it dictates and what we get done. So bear with us and be patient and take care of your, your potholes for you. We have been picking up, as you see on my, on my sheet, we have been picking up debris and so forth along the streets and some of the alleys that we've, we've tried to just straighten up and clean up. The group does, I think, a pretty good job of doing all that. So I appreciate their help with that.
Overtime, snow problems?
At the, at the very end of that, and then we had some problems with, with the trucks. It was so, with the packer truck, going on, truck.
Cost of operating your department, one hundred thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cents. And I have overtime here of seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
That seems unusually high.
We had four thousand in overtime for MVH and two thousand, twenty-seven hundred for DOT.
The fellow's working on the sweeper, too. We've, we've had to rework that thing again, too. So that's costly.
Sometimes when we are plowing snow, we have to have a mechanic there because things break down. The sweeper has been almost completely rebuilt. It, I don't know how old it is, but it has given us
The engine's a ninety-five.
And that guy comes to work on our earlier, or two hours?
No, I haven't changed his time yet.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
But I think you'll find that most of that overtime comes to keeping these things. All of our equipment is old. Everything they got.
Remember the last snow we had was on a Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
That would have fallen into, if that's
It was in March, so.
That was expensive night for me, too. But anyway, it all worked out and everything's fine. So sorry about the overtime. Like I, I keep saying, all our snow seems to be on Saturdays and Sundays. Why can't it be on Wednesday mornings at eight?
TV three.
Thank you.
Back to Dave.
Thank you.
For the month of March, had eight hours, forty-eight minutes of meetings and seven hours, twenty-two minutes of original programming. The main news, though, is that about two weeks ago, the studio got hit by lightning. And it fared pretty well. We have pretty decent surge protectors and power backups on everything. But our Baltimore computer is getting fairly old. And its primary hard drive boot sector failed when we lost power. After about two hours of, of power outage, the UPS has failed and it went down. And the, we had to send it off for repair. But because it was a hardware failure, that would not have been covered under our extended warranty. So the city county IT director, Michael King, and I rebuilt the computer and then sent it to them for repair. So it's free, using the parts we had around. So we got that sent off and it's back up and running now. So we were down last week, though. We had a few calls. People coming in wondering why the weather bug was always on count three. And that was why our Baltimore system was down for repair. So, but it is functioning.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, John. The two thousand and fifteen meet candidates that you and Fran did a really, really nice job. And all the candidates were great, were presenting also. But you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
That completes our department reports. I'd like to have old business. Anybody got any old business? Can I bring up something we discussed past? I think we've covered the heavy trash and probably those three things that are taking place.
I want to bring up Storm. He was there and it was very nice. And a lot of people were there. I seen Gabe there. And I thought it was well worth your money you spent on it. Brought her, brought her kids down to the stage and everything. It was very good.
I think it was the biggest one we ever had.
Yeah, it was over twelve hundred kids there.
Anything else on our old business? Okay. Let's go to Ms. Laney's business. What do you have, Ruby? Anything you want up in your district? Any problems?
Well, yeah. I forget your name. What is it?
Dennis.
I, I brought up, he's having, they're at Grace and I at Mathis has a big hole. And I went over and talked to Dave about it. Because the cleaners are going in there and bringing food. And there has been a couple of people fell. And so I went over and told Dave about it. And I remind him tonight of it before you come in and saying that, you know, need to get, and he said, soon as he could, he would get it fixed.
Where is that at?
In the alley of the church?
Yeah. Grace and I. And he just won't know who was gonna be responsible. Somebody fell down.
That's, that's the city. That's a city out, out hallway. So it doesn't belong to church in Old Burn Alley. And they come out carrying their groceries and fall there and have to go to the, to the hospital. And the city's gonna be getting filled. But just to give you an example, January, just from our food pantry, we had two hundred and seventy-four households that, that came and got food at our, in our church. That's nine hundred and ninety-nine people that don't have February. But March, we had two hundred and thirty-nine, two hundred and thirty-nine households. And that's eight hundred and fifty-three people. So that's a lot of people crossing that area. And it, and it doesn't seem like it's a spot they cross. It's, it's only about like, but we had a guy from our church fall there a month and a half ago. And he still can't, he'll use, use this arm. So.
It's, it's been, it's been a bad winter on potholes. And then the spring has been so wet. You can't patch pothole when it's wet. And then, of course, it was, we've just been able to get hot mix about the last ten days. Nobody was making hot mix. I even tried to get some out of CGS and they weren't making it yet. So we're now getting hot mix. And we are patching every day, except for
Yeah, I know you are. But I just, you know, I'm just telling you, there's a lot of people there. And I'm just afraid it
And I tell people, if you have a hole in front of your house, you got a hole someplace, call the street department. The number's in the book. And I don't mind you calling my office. But all I do then is call over there and tell them to go do it.
Well, I told
Well, I, well, I told Ruby that, that, I told Ruby that
As many people were
That I called. But I couldn't find my paperwork to substantiate it. So if I can't find the paperwork, it never happened.
But that day, you told me. I went down and talked to Dave. And then I talked to him this evening about before you came here.
I think this week, if it just dries up a little bit, we'll get the, most of the holes filled and taken care of. Okay, Tom, what do you have on Ms. Laney's?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good.
Thank you.
Debbie?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Dave?
I just want to thank the EMS and the firefighters for the quick response today and I appreciate it a lot. Thanks, guys.
You don't want to talk about your flower?
Oh, yeah. Flower sales coming up.
I'm trying to think of what to talk about.
Well, I have really
It's coming up May eighth. We're gonna have it right, right after school on the eighth till six o'clock.
What's the time you start?
Three forty-five. So you wanna be there, too?
Yeah, standing in line from two to three forty-five.
And then we'll have it again on Saturday morning from nine to one.
I'm kind of out of line, but I was gonna tell you. The people up there on the wall, up there on Thirty Street, Ann Duncan's gonna have a meeting with them. And I think
That meeting is scheduled for the twenty-sixth at
No, the twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth, four to five.
Four to five, twenty-sixth.
And she's gonna talk to people about it. And a lot of them didn't want it. And I really didn't either. But I think a lot of them's changed their minds since they know that the street department and Parks Department's gonna take care of that area. But we're having a meeting with a lot of the people up there.
Twenty-sixth.
And it's not a final deal yet. But it talks better.
That's on a Sunday afternoon.
Yes, it is.
It's at the Expo Hall.
Yep. And I have a letter here.
Your honor, the media would like to know what you're talking about.
Okay, that's the, the
Fayette County
Nickel Plate Trail. We have received a grant to put the trail from Thirty Second Street up to the creek. And they're gonna have a neighborhood meeting on the twenty-sixth at the Centennial Room and talk about it. Neighbors are invited. And I think she's, I got a letter. I presume everybody's getting a letter that's involved.
That lives up that way.
Yeah.
Because I just don't think, I didn't think it's fair for us people here to make a decision for people that's gonna have to live up there and make a decision if that's what they want. And the way it talks now, Ann Duncan is talking to them and, and explaining it to them better and everything.
That's why they're having a meeting.
I know that.
Anything else under Ms. Laney's word, I'll leave off. David?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Doctor, you've been very quiet tonight.
I am quiet, man. Meditating.
Tony?
Don't eat fish, meditate.
Well, let's see. This weekend is Fayette County Humane Society Shot Clinic, Spring Shot Clinic.
Where's that? What time?
It's on Western Avenue at the, it's two-five-hundred block. You'll see the sign. It's where it's always been. I can't remember the name of the building. It's from like nine-thirty to twelve. Low-cost shots, vaccination. I think they're doing chipping and nail trimming and the whole nine yards, so.
Western Avenue?
Western.
Two-five-hundred.
Uh, it's the old furniture building.
The Cherry Hill?
It's the south end.
The old furniture store there.
Oh, the old furniture store.
Yeah, it's the south end.
Where the bluegrass music was.
Yes.
Now we got it.
The south end, yeah. And as far as this meeting, I, I, I hope that everybody comes to that meeting on the trail. Because I went to the meeting that was held at the Miller Building for the neighbors of the Grand Avenue project. And I was amazed at the ones that really didn't go. And so they were sort of left out of the knowledge of, you know, what was up and coming, you know, with their street project. So I encourage them to go to that. That's all I have.
Anything legal you need to tell us, Mr. Baker?
No, sir. The unavoidable business I had during the Board of Works meeting has been taken care of. I can report that. Sorry to miss the meeting.
Tonight, we have the pinwheel thing down at the courthouse for child abuse. And I was talking to Mr. Munchel and the circuit judge. I believe they told me there were fifty more cases of child abuse the first quarter of this year in Fayette County than there were last year. This is something we need to all be aware of. And they need volunteers. They need foster parents. They need volunteers at CASA. And all of us need to do as much as we can. We do need food at the food bank. One out of four children in Fayette County do not get enough to eat. That's what I was told tonight. So if you have extra money or if you go to the grocery, pick up a couple of extra sacks and drop it off up there on Indiana Avenue at the food. Dennis talking to his church has got one. The Baptist Temple does gleaners. We will be starting gleaners up at the park just shortly. The school corporation is gonna feed kids. And we're gonna feed the kids at Summer Discovery. We served almost twelve hundred kids last year. And I'm hoping we can do that this year. Do you have something?
Yeah, gleaners is Wednesday night.
And where's it at? At the park?
It's at the fourteen acres.
Fourteen Acres. What time?
Starts at four o'clock.
No, no, wait a minute. Come on in here.
It's at the park.
I thought it was
It's four to six.
That's why I just told
At the park, not
Yeah, at the pavilion.
Okay.
Pavilion. We do that in warm weather. Okay. You have any update? How's the money?
It's in.
Low, slow.
Public forum, it's your turn. Anybody like to speak? Go up to the podium.
I'm Brian Dobbs, if you don't know me. Couple things. I live on Grand. There's been a lot of changes back and forth on the gas lines and the redoing work. Are we held responsible for that? Or are the people doing the work held responsible for that? Because I know the gas lines got moved. We talked about it in the meeting. Somebody was talking about it at the Miller Building. And then they had to come back in recently and start redoing gas lines.
Okay, I'll tell you how that works. Everything that is in the original engineered contract is covered with the money that we are putting out. There are some work orders or change orders in there. And as of today, on that particular project, we're either at four or six change orders. Not very many. Not very much money. But there are certain things that we are doing as we do the project. We're putting new water services in a lot of houses. We, we had it scheduled today. We were gonna shut the water off and do a lot of them today. And we could. That comes out of utility. No, the people that live there are not paying anything extra. Nobody on that street is paying anything extra to get anything done unless they ask for cement or they, they do something on their own. It's all covered. But the trick to it is, it has to be in the project in the beginning. If it's not in the project in the beginning, and they dig in there and they find it, then it's our responsibility to pay for it. However, there's some contingent money in that project. And we've been using that contingent money. We ran a drain from Whipple's Upholstery. We, we found a great big tank under one of the buildings we had to take out. It was a change order. Mike, can you help me with the other two change orders I have?
I don't know.
It's hard to, we're doing an F project. We're engineering the twenty-fourth to thirtieth. And we're doing that project. So I have to have the paper in front of me. But those are the two big change orders.
Water line needs to be moved. It was deeper than they thought. You do a water line?
I just wasn't sure because it seems, it seems like they're kinda jumping all over the place. We're not, I mean, the water, the really, the only ones that are working there, and I live there and I see it every day. The only ones that are really there all the time is utilities guys and the gas guys. And then you got Milestone that is there quite a bit. The other contractors?
Milestone is the contractor.
Who's the, there's one contractor working more in the twenty-third, twenty-fourth block.
Okay, the other, the F project is
No, these are the guys that's been on it for
Okay, well, that's, that's Milestone. They got the project.
Okay. I just, like I said, I seen jumping all over the place. I mean, they moved a water meter.
I've had some people up there said, don't hire them again. If you get to be mayor, don't hire them again. But guess what? You don't have any choice. You don't get to pick them.
No, I know the state does. But I was just kinda thinking that, I mean, I mean, when is the deadline for that, for that
Well, as we just said, we hope to have the parade on that street on the last Sunday of July. of July.
When we, when we first met, they were talking about it was gonna be done by now, but, I mean, I can understand projects kinda going.
It never was planned to be done until August. August is the, it says substantially complete by August, and there'll still be some other stuff that has to be done, has to be completed.
It's supposed to be substantially complete in June.
No, it's August, it's substantially complete.
We haven't even put the base in on that.
It'll go pretty quick if it just quit raining, you know, you just can't do anything with this rain.
I just know there was like three or four months last winter, they could've been working, and, you know, could we have forced them to be able to get out there and start working? Is this all in?
It's, it's within the contract.
Okay. And then I don't understand why we're tearing up Twenty First and Grand at the same time.
That's, that's the F project, and we're hooking on there and going up and turning it up. That is our project. Because as mayor, I'm mandated to have a project going all the time. That's our project, the next project. That project will fill in between twenty-fourth, and then when we start twenty-fourth to thirtieth, they will pick another project. But you have to have one working and one being designed at all times. In fact, we're behind right now, I just got a letter, we're, we're behind, we've asked for an extension, so we're mandated to do all this stuff. It's not right, and I fuss about it all the time, but that's the way it is.
I just see the people right there on Vermont and Iowa, you know, they're really gonna be, if there's a fire department or a fire, you know, I mean, I've heard comments made from the fire department and everybody else, it's, there's.
The F project should go real fast. It's not as deep, it's down the middle of the street, it's not a full street skate, sidewalks aren't being taken out, it's just down the street. It should go fast.
I don't think we're gonna try to tear up a walk at a time, though.
Yeah, there were small sections out of line.
They're not gonna do them.
What's our contractor there?
Brackney?
Brackney. Brackney did Third Street for us, they're a great contractor, you'll see a big difference.
He made a talk about Snyder, the other group in Grand, and he makes the.
You guys were first started off the project.
Well, they're the inspectors.
They're the inspector, so they're there, too.
There was a crew there of about five guys that was doing it at the very beginning, and they, like I said, if it sprinkled in the morning, they were gone the whole day.
I haven't been happy with it, but there isn't much you can do about it. Within their contract, we have, we meet with them every two weeks on Wednesday at one o'clock, and as a homeowner on that street, I invite you if you wanna come, I've had the homeowners in, you're welcome to come in there, we meet either in this room or over in my conference room every other Wednesday. We won't meet this Wednesday, we'll meet the following Wednesday. And we meet with the contractor, you usually meet with Endot, I have the utility people in there, and I meet with them, and we have been pushing, 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 and the weather keeps pushing, pushing, pushing.
I know everybody on that street would really like to be able to get it done, so that's why.
I don't know how you stand to live there, it's been so bad. But what do you do in the middle of town when you gotta do that?
Not a whole lot.
And the whole town needs to be done.
How did we get, some of the neighbors got gravel put in the back of their yards, other ones didn't, there's still.
Shouldn't be any.
Yeah, the street department actually took the big payloader down there.
Nope.
I saw it, the street leader to the, the street department or somebody actually took the big payloader down there.
We put no gravel in anybody's yard, right?
No, their yard was taken along the alley.
It was in their back of yard, but, I mean, I watched it. I was just kinda wondering, 'cause other neighbors, too, were asking about.
I will check it out, I, we put no street on, no gravel on private property.
Okay.
Now, if somebody, we put gravel in the alley 'cause we fixed the holes, 'cause we're using the alley for the trash truck and the ambulance, the fire truck, if somebody takes that gravel and puts it there, that the city is not, and I have pushed that, no gravel on private property. How many times have I said that?
Five.
Five. How many times have I said it at the meeting on Wednesday?
In between twenty-second, twenty-third, and in between Grand and Vermont, take a drive down that alley.
I will. If they're putting gravel on private property, I'm in trouble.
Well, I'd say there's two or three other people that actually had it brought in, that I could see a payloader, so, there was gravel put there, but I was just wondering, 'cause some of the other neighbors are asking how they can get gravel in the back of their yards as well, so.
That's another thing, there was nothing in the project to maintain the alleys while they were doing the street. That project is like the project that's being designed now from twenty-fourth to thirtieth is done while I'm here, but it'll be actually constructed under somebody else. That project, these are front of your house, was designed before I got here, I end up with it.
Why aren't we taking the automated trash truck down the alleys? Why aren't we, 'cause when we first talked about it, it was actually gonna be manpower, it was gonna be used one of the older trucks.
The trash truck should go right down that alley and pick them up, shouldn't be a problem. We measured it and checked it.
It's just tearing up the alleys really bad.
The packers heavier than that.
Okay.
And when you use a packer, we gotta put six people out. Takes three people to a truck.
Some of the questions I had, I appreciate you.
I will be up there, though, I'll be up there and look at that.
If you have any questions, I could show you exactly where it's at. Not saying anything about the neighbor, I mean, if everybody could do it, that'd be great, but.
Mike? Mike?
Yes.
I think if we can move forward right now, we could be done with our part of that in what, a week, right?
Yes.
The water boxes and the changing leak we gotta do, we could do in a week, week and a half, we'd be done, they'd be ready to put pavement down.
They said they've got it all the way down, they're getting ready to put base in, they're all the way up to about, we're right in front of my house, pretty much at twenty-second and Grand, and they're moving forward, and like you said, when it's dry, they're able to move forward quite a bit.
That project is only about a year behind.
Yeah.
It didn't get started when it should have. You gotta coordinate the gas people, you gotta coordinate the telephone people, you gotta get the trees down, you just gotta do everything, and it just didn't get started on time, and it's been a mess.
Okay, well, appreciate your time, thanks.
Anybody else? Public forum? Anybody? Some people have been asking me about when we're gonna tear the houses down, and we've still got some time, what was it, a hundred and twenty days?
Yeah, before we take possession from the day of the sale.
Once we take possession, and then we'll be doing our, our studies, and then we'll be taking bids on those houses, and I see Mr. Frank here. People are asking, when are we gonna get to do that? Mr. Raiders quit, and I said, well, I think there's enough hometown contractors that'll bid on those. I think at this time, we got six. I think we got six that'll be ready to go. Also, we've been told, why didn't we take that money and fix them up and sell them? The grant is to tear them down, there is no grant to fix, I wish there was, but there isn't. The grant is to tear them down and clean them up and make pocket parks or make use of them some other way. It's a federal grant then through the state, but there is no grant to fix anything up, and we don't have the money to fix it. Anything else under public forum appearing? We'll ask for, you got anything you wanna say? Okay. Counsel? I'm ready for an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion. Marianne Morris's number, will you put it on TV? Got a motion and a second to adjourn all in favor, say aye. Any of you?
Aye.
Motion, Terry?
Yeah, nobody.